Good afternoon. We now call to order the Tuesday, August 6, 2024, 3:00 PM, School Board Workshop. Please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the National Anthem. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, Saint, can you see by the dawn's early light? One so proudly we hail at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stars through the perilous skies? For the manors we watch, worlds of galaxies streaming? And the rock is red, the river's green, the sea is blue? The night that our flag was still there? Oh, Saint, as that star-spangled banner yet raised? For the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, so now we'll move on to roll call.
Kristy Chalk.
Sally?
Oh, Sally Hunt, present.
Wolfery, present.
Or Shaka Moore.
And just for point of information, Dr. Conklin called in and said she was not going to be able to make it, and Board Member Massaro, she made every effort to be here, but unfortunately because of the storm, her flights were canceled returning, so she could not make it. So just so everybody to know. And so we will move forward here. We have proclamations, board minutes, board members to review those. If there's any changes, let the staff know. And we...
Addition and subtraction.
Addition and subtraction. Is there any changes to the agenda today?
Yes, I do ask that we move 11.01, 11.02, and 11.03 up together and move those after public comment.
Very good. We will do that. And so now we will move on to public comment. Has anybody signed up for public comment?
Yeah.
Okay. Would anybody like to make public comment? Seeing no one come forward, we will close that out and bring it back, and we will move right into 11.01 through 11.03.
And they all will come up collectively. We have Mr. Freeman, FESPA, Ms. Bozeman for FCEA, and then Ms. Patty Warmick that's going to discuss our salary schedules.
Lock them off.
All right. Good afternoon. I'll go ahead and start since I'm 11:01. Good afternoon, Board, Chair Furry, Superintendent Moore. At the May meeting or May timeframe, FESPA and the district staff met, and we TA'd several articles for this last school year, and I have outlined those in my board docs, and I'm willing to go over each one of those if you'd like. Some of the highlights of the FESPA articles is that we added an article to mirror what was in the FCEA with the emergency school closing article. So that's exactly like, similar to what's in the FCEA. We also updated the para-salary lane, and as a joint committee, we had a, we did a one-time stabilization payment for FESPA and FCEA, and those numbers are attached. If you have any questions on the FESPA side, I'd be happy to elaborate.
Okay, no specific questions from me, but are there any other major highlights in these memorandums of understanding that are, that have significantly changed that, other than what you just highlighted?
No.
No?
Okay. Just what I've highlighted and what I've outlined in each one of the articles on the board.
Okay, and then the para-salary, what were, what were the changes there?
We basically changed the percentage from each step to what the district average was in its listed.
It was much lower previous to that, so we were trying to make it very consistent with the average of all the other lanes.
Okay.
Can we look at other districts' salaries and how they compare?
One of the things that we did in this go-around is we agreed to have a salary matrix committee and to look at our salary lanes to address steps, number of steps that we have, number of lanes, and when we do that, we do take into account what other districts have. So the answer is yes, we do.
Okay. And on the emergency school closing, what was the language that was?
We mirrored what was in FCEA. The only thing that was different than FCEA was for the support side, FCEA has 24 hours' notice for the support side. We said our best effort to get at least 12 hours' notice, because a lot of times our support folks are closing down a shelter and we're opening up the very next day, and that's a short turnaround, and it can be, you know, right around 12 hours.
Okay, all right. All right, so any other questions, Board, on attend item 11.01?
And this will go before their bargaining unit?
Thank you, yes. It is, they're posting it on Monday, the 12th, they're voting on Wednesday, and then we should have the results on the 19th.
Okay.
And then this will come before you as a board?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, very good. Would this, would this be coming back on the, on the 20th?
20th, yes.
All right. All right, so appears there's no further questions on this agenda item, so we'll move on to 11.02.
All right, well, good afternoon, and I really appreciate the accommodation of moving our agenda item up at the school. This is absolutely our busiest week of the year, so appreciate being able to scoot back to Matanzas to work on pre-planning. So our team met with the FCEA, Teachers Union, between April and June, and tentatively agreed to several articles, as well as an MOU, as well as a revision to an appendix. I can sort of walk a little bit through every article. There was a lot of little changes, is sort of how I would describe it, some themes that emerged. So Article 6 in the teacher contract is on working conditions, teaching conditions, so a lot of miscellaneous items in here. Some highlights are, pre-planning would be organized into half-day blocks for our teachers. So instead of, you know, having an hour here and then an hour back in their classroom, their time would be organized into half-day blocks so that they have some continuous time to plan. We clarified planning expectations for our instructional staff that did not have rostered students. So our social workers, our mental health counselors, our speech-language pathologists, school counselors, deans, behavior interventionists, we have a number of folks in that instructional category that they do not have a class, like you think about a kindergarten class coming in, or a science teacher that has classes for a certain period of day and then a set planning. And we clarified that those folks do need planning time, that they should be working with their supervisors to make sure that it's adequate. It's, it's not exactly as simple as saying 50 continuous minutes, which is what the contract says for our classroom teachers. That was sort of a clarification piece we came to an agreement on. Teachers will be allowed to work from home on teacher workdays, so this is not during pre-planning, but the teacher workdays that are throughout the school year, teachers would be able to work from home. That's something that's been a trend across the state, and it will give some teachers that flexibility to be able to get that planning done and not be constrained by childcare needs and whatever the case may be. That's Article 6 in a nutshell. Article 8 surrounds evaluation, and the clarification of Article 8 is that by statute, relatively recent statute in the last couple of years, evaluation is under the authority of the superintendent to determine evaluation procedures, what evaluation system we use. And our contract specifically had really specific language that was related to our currently used system. And so what we came to an agreement about is that that language would be removed and really restore that authority per statute to the superintendent to make a decision about evaluation systems and procedures. We will still keep intact an evaluation committee, which has been a practice, and that committee will include representatives from the union who will be able to advise Ms. Moore or the superintendent on, you know, what those evaluation procedures should look like. Evaluation procedures are highly articulated in statute. It's a very specific plan that the district has to put together. It has to have very specific components. So really, a lot of what was stricken from here is going to still be in any evaluation plan that the superintendent should adopt. It just gives our superintendent that authority to make those changes without having to go back through the contract, if that makes sense.
So should we expect a lot of changes in these evaluations with this change in there? Or is that, is that going to be a more fluid type of thing as needed?
So we have to submit to the state what we're going to utilize for our evaluation. It really just takes out of the contract language that would be my managerial right statutorily.
Okay.
And so a lot of the components that were listed are still a statutory requirement, but it just restores back to management my authority when it comes to the evaluation process, yeah. But whatever we do must still be submitted to the state and approved by the state through the guidelines.
Okay, thank you for that. All right.
Article 11 is staff authority and protection, and there is a lot of statutes in place. This has to do with teacher control over their students and discipline and how administration responds, and the authority that teachers have within their classroom over student discipline, writing referrals and those sorts of things. So what we were really able to agree is to add a mention of the Teacher Authority Act in Florida statute, and that, of course, the school district will comply with that statute. And then we also added in specifically that staff will be trained at the beginning of the year on Flagler Schools policies, procedures, and related documents, such as our student code of conduct, our discipline matrix, make sure teachers understand what those discipline levels are, and then if a teacher disagrees with the discipline consequence that is given, they have the right to meet with the principal to discuss that. So really just firming up the authority that teachers have, which again is already in statute, and making sure our teachers are educated about how this one works at the school level.
Okay.
That's Article 11. Article 22 is our leave article, and we really made a few tweaks. Again, we tried to keep alignment for things like leave between our FESPA contract and our FCEA, because we don't want different classes of employees having different sets of parameters for things like leave. So we tweaked a couple of pieces, specifically added language that, you know, a supervisor could request a doctor's note if they notice a pattern of absences, for example, before and after a holiday. We can request a medical note if all, you know, if that's happening, if there's malfeasance suspected, as well as specifically enumerating language that, you know, personal leave must be approved in advance. So not any significant changes, but again, changing some of the language to make sure it aligns with what we have in the FESPA side. That's 22. Another one that was significant is the article that's differentiated pay, which is related to supplements, and that one, I believe, is 27? Yeah, it's right there, 27. So we have a supplement committee that, per the contract, the supplement committee has representatives from elementary, middle, and high school, both from management as well as on the Teachers Union side, and we met several times throughout the spring to review the supplements and look at what is out of date, you know, what hasn't been used in several years. The supplement appendix in the back of the contract, the date that was listed on the contract was 2017. It had not been reviewed in several years, and so what had happened was, you know, principals were having to improvise, and we didn't have supplements for things that we do have going on in the school, and we had supplements for clubs that we hadn't had in many years. And so the objective of us meeting as a supplement committee was really get that updated, get it to reflect what the needs are in the school. We worked very closely with the finance department to analyze which supplements have been paid out over the last five years, which ones have not, and really just update that based on the needs. So that was a significant effort to just get that supplement article really updated. And so the most of the changes that you'll see are actually in that supplement appendix. There's a lot of, you know, notes of what was taken out and what was added for supplements. The, most of the dollar amounts did not change. It was more of adding, removing things that were outdated and then adding things that have been in place, you know, things like robotics clubs and STEM clubs that weren't listed in the previous list, but that have been going on in our school.
Okay.
And then in terms of compensation, you know, Patty will talk about the salary schedules, but we did a workforce stabilization MOU, which is on, you know, both FESPA and FCEA, and that will give employees a set one-time payment based on their years of continuous service currently in Flagler Schools.
And that's to be paid out prior to August 31st.
And then in terms of compensation, we tentatively agreed to the performance pay and the grandfathered steps as it's, as it's been established in the contract, which is no changes from previous years.
And that one-time payment, is that only for like new employees? How does that work?
If you look at the actual agreements on board docs, it will outline everything. I do believe this one here that's pulled up, they need to be employed since July 1, 2023, and still actively employed.
At the time of 24.
Yeah, for this 24-25 school year. It's a workforce stabilization, so the idea is employee retention.
All right. Any questions?
Chair Furry, can I just make a quick comment?
Absolutely.
Awesome. I just wanted to, really excited about the change on the teacher workday, working from home. What a great benefit, you know, something that doesn't cost the district anything, but I can see where that would be a great benefit to our instructional staff. As you mentioned, not having to find, you know, child services that day, and just the comfort of working from home to get through all the stuff they have to get through. So I just wanted to say, things like that are just wonderful and hope that, you know, going forward, anytime that any of our staff have ideas like that, you know, that they would bring them forward.
Yeah, and not only just like working from home, but just from an alternate location on those workdays for our, for our instructional staff. It's a big one, for sure.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
The ratification vote for FCEA will take place on Thursday.
All right. All right, anything more you'd like to add? Okay, well then we will move on to 11.03, Shaka Moore.
This is the 24-25 salary schedules for all areas. As Mrs. Bozeman stated, there were no changes to the instructional salary schedule. That has remained the same, and as Mr. Freeman stated, the only change on the support salary schedule is for the para-lane. The only other change is on the substitute pay scale. At the very bottom, we did add an additional line item for the FTC part-time instructor at a $17 hourly rate. Other than that, everything has stayed status quo.
Is there a reason it doesn't change, or really is it just?
It all occurs during bargaining. It all really depends on funding, and what's happened is it has changed several times over the past couple of years because of Florida statutes with the teacher salary increase allocation. Since we have met the 47-5, a lot of the restrictions on what we have to do to increase it have been let go from the statutes. So that's why we've kind of stayed consistent over the past two years.
Like I know there was like some bill signed to add more teacher funding, but I guess we don't get that, because we're already there.
As of, as of where we're at right now, that would probably possibly impact 24-25 bargaining, which is open book for us.
Okay.
Any other questions? No? Okay, then we will conclude this session. Thank you all for your, great presentation.
Yeah.
Okay, so now we are going to be back to finance consent, 7.01.
Good afternoon, Freeman, Furry, Board members, and Superintendent Moore. Ms. Whitmore and I are here to answer any questions you have on finance consent, 7.01 through 7.04, and then we will bring our purchasing coordinator up and Mr. Rock for 705.
I was just curious about the waste management. Is that like an annual?
Can you tell me which one you're on?
Let me go to that. Little ways down. Garbage collection. Yeah, is that just like?
It's annual.
It's just a annual? Seems like so much money.
Everything's a lot of money, but yes, that's a recurring one every year. And what you're seeing on this report is a lot of the new POs for 24-25. That's why this report is so large.
On the SARA consulting, that's for lobbying services.
Correct.
Did that increase from last year?
Yes, it did. They have not had an increase in, I want to say about four to five years, and that increase was approved by the board in May or June.
What, how mu, do you recall what the previous amount was?
I do not, but I can get that to you. Is it?
It was in the 30s.
I would say $36,000, and like I said, it has not increased in several years, and the services they provide have substantially increased to us.
Okay, very good. And then going down to page three, the MiFi wireless internet services for schools, AT&amp;2 mobility, what exactly is that?
That is the hotspots that we use. So when people travel, they're at conferences, the schools have various hotspots that they have for their admin staff, and there are several here through GSB. So that's what it is. Every hotspot device is about $600 per month, so depending on the school needs, that's what this PO is for.
I'm just curious why we need a wireless hotspot with, you know, with, we have Wi-Fi everywhere, and most people's phones have internet. What demands are there for this?
If you're in a, if you're traveling, like I've experienced this many times at a conference where we just can't, we're in a conference room where we can't get on, we use the hotspot, Carrie and I do, to enable us to get on our laptop and, and be live. So it's not something that's used in the schools, it's when we're outside of the schools. If people do not have a personal hotspot, they can't get online with anything. I've been at baseball fields where I need to do stuff, and so I would use my hotspot just to try to get stuff done.
Mr. Dising?
So the piece that I wanted to add to it also on top of that is it's part of our disaster plan, so having those as part of each one of the departments, and also the note to this is AT&amp;T for the state of Florida has the contract for the FirstNet, which is the first responder network, and because we're a direct support organization for the first responders, meaning we shelter for the community, we're able to take advantage of that. So when there are outages, those devices take priority over top of civilian connectivity. So that allows when you have limited cell service that those take a step, similar to what our sheriff's office, our county folks are able to, and first responder, EMT, firefighter are able to take advantage. are able to take advantage of.
Okay.
So that's, that's why.
So it's also a backup service in case our Wi-Fi goes down, we still have some connectivity?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
And so it, because it has that, it's part of our safety and security, is what fund is
that paid out of? Is it, it says general, is that general fund?
Yes, that's general funds.
Okay. So would that, would that be something that would fall under like a half penny type of thing as well?
Well, the thing with that is it's then coded as it's a service. So that piece of it being that it's a service. So technically, when we bring on or need replacements for those devices, half cent sales tax buys the device, so we're not subsidizing that with the monthly, monthly fee.
Right.
So we get a reduced rate on the monthly fee because we're not paying any type of payment paying down those devices and being that they are part of FirstNet, they are a little more expensive than what you see typically. You know, if you went to the AT&amp;T store to buy.
The commercial grade for, for the demands of enterprise.
Correct.
Use, okay. And this, this period, is this, what is this covering? This $38,400, what period of time is it?
For the entire fiscal year of 24-25.
So it is the annual amount.
And we, we use our hotspots quite often, especially if we're in a location where the Wi-Fi isn't trusted for our devices to connect to, even within here, within our, in our community, if we're out somewhere working to be able to have them available. But definitely in emergency situations, last year with some of the things that we experienced at Buddy Taylor, when we had to be off-site reunitifying our families, that's a part of our kit that we bring to us so that when we're sitting out in Cole's parking lot, we can log on and get connected and continue to get the work done that we need to do, especially in reunification and safety.
Right, well that makes sense too, you know, certain Wi-Fi networks are not safe and secure to conduct certain types of business and transfer certain types of information. So that makes a lot of sense to me there. Thanks for clarifying that, I appreciate it.
Next to the quantum, how does it say two months?
Ms. Macerro also submitted that question around quantum and when our last, will we continue to see payments to quantum?
Sure, so, and I'll have Mr. Rulat come up here to explain further in case there's questions. The insurance plan year is from September to August, so we have moved away from quantum, so we're only going to be paying July and August for 24-25. And then there's a new provider for the September through August insurance year.
So her question was specifically like, will they see another deal come for quantum or is this the last payment?
Those two months should be the very last payments for quantum, and then.
Communetas comes on board.
Communetas comes on board starting September 1st. So they will then have a PO for the remaining 10 months of fiscal year.
If I can also ask another question that was submitted from Ms. Macerro. It was about gas, like our fuel?
Fuel.
Yes, and how that is paid out, you know, is this a PO for the year? Is this paid quarterly? She just wants, she wanted to know the gas and how it's paid out.
Typically, Fleet does quarterly POs for that.
Okay, so that.
I told her I would ask.
So I think the budget was a $600 and something thousand dollar budget for that, correct?
Yeah. I can shed a little light on that.
Sure.
We do a PO, an annual PO, and then when we need to purchase gas, we're purchasing fuel at whatever that cost is at that time. So for this last year on diesel, it went from anywhere from $3.08 all the way up to $4.07 for regular, it was $2.79 to $3.09. So throughout the year, it's whatever the going rate is, but the PO is a standard PO.
So is that, is the PO annual? It must be the tires, the stuff they do quarterly?
I believe it's annual unless we need.
Then we adjust it and increase funds.
Yeah, it says here through, for school year, July 2024 through June 2025.
Yes, I stand corrected.
And it's a $680,000 purchase order.
And what happens is we usually reassess this in December or at the end of the third quarter to determine if we have to add more funds to get through the end of the fiscal year.
And those numbers I gave you were what we did last year, you know, the spread. Obviously, this year fuel was a little bit higher than last year, so.
Well, do you, again, you may or may not have these statistics right now, but it just popped into mind. So with the new school buses that we're getting, are these supposed to also be more fuel-efficient than our older buses where we might see some savings there on fuel?
They are, they are, the newer models are fuel, more fuel-efficient. I'm sorry, I don't know what those numbers are off the top of my head.
I know they use a lot of ga, a lot of diesel, a lot of gas, but you know, just, it would be interesting to see if we truly have any efficiency there. I guess the numbers will tell us when we, when we go, after we run them for a year once we get them, so. Okay, thanks for that. Any other questions on this agenda item for items purchase orders over 10,000? No? Okay, so we'll move on to 7.02, vendor payments. And does anybody have any questions or concerns here? I had a question regarding, you know, all of our Apple purchases. That is one of the larger expenditures in this particular purchase order. And I just wanted to get an understanding of how, how frequent are these items? Is this, is this something that we're, we're doing every year? Are we, are we buying a lot more this year to replace old stuff or?
So the, some of the large ones that we did, which were brought, was a refresh for our primary grades, so our K3, is a replacement of roughly 3,300 iPads. So those are actually out being placed in classrooms now. We also, we also budget for devices for, for staff, and we typically, we typically buy those in lots, in a manner that we can actually get them out and get those devices to those teachers in a nice clean manner. So we're, we're not just handing them the device, but we're migrating their information. So rather than buying what is expected over the course of the entire year, at one point, we buy them in chunks about every two to three months for staff. So that's why you'll see consistent number of POs going with, with Apple.
So is it, is there something that dictates time for replacement per se across the board? Do they have a certain lifespan and once they reach that date, we, we buy new ones or is it based on?
We do a combination of things. We, we work very closely with Apple on projection as far as operating system and operating system requirements, particularly around other core applications that we use, as well as into taking account requirements from the state for, for testing. So we monitor with those on which OS is available, and then we work with Apple on which, how long do those iOS devices supported for the latest updates? And then, once we hit four years on those devices, we do a grading process that we do as part of our collection and redistribution, where we're looking at those devices and then repurposing some and then adding, replenishing into the fleet depending on what those look like as well as budget availability. So it's, it's a combination thereof, like we, we do get where some devices are used up for years, yep, it's time for, for surplus, and then other times where we may take them out of a particular role and place them in another. Example sometimes is with, with some of the kiosk stuff or special event devices where they're not used all the time. So we'll, we'll tend to use those in multiple roles as they roll out as a primary device for a student or, or staff.
And so when it gets to that point where, you know, it's four years, five years, do those still have any, any value anymore or are they a junk device?
They typically have some, some value to them. And what happens with most of the devices, when we have these lots, they're part of the process donating those to the Ed Foundation. So we have that opportunity as, as a DSO, a direct service.
Organization.
Organization, thank you. So that has worked out pretty well for, for both. So in those, it allows the Ed Foundation kind of to, to take advantage of some opportunities to reuse those. Some of it they put to auction, some of it goes to recyclers, some of it they directly donate to a community organizations. So kind of as a reminder of why, why we were doing this came up years ago, when we were talking about the, the conversations of whether or not that we could sell devices to students as they were exiting the system. And this was really worked through with former director at the Ed Foundation, and we kind of talked through, through this was presented to the board, it's probably been about five years, five years ago. So they can kind of take advantage of some pieces as far as what, what options they have with those devices that we, we cannot. We can put them, you know, take them, put them in a lot and send them to auction, which really does not benefit the district very, very much. A lot of times, those pieces and those contracts have information as far as how they're assessed and what kind of dollar value that you end up with. So it becomes very, a very kind of different scenario where if you're talking about like public auctions, sometimes eBay, those, those types of things, they have some of those options that could go.
So, so that's what's happening now. So we're, when they get there, we are, we're giving most of them to the Ed Foundation if they have any value or they're operating.
Yeah, our team is part of our, right, as, as we're rolling these things out, our team kind of assesses them and kind of looks at, here's, here's devices that are kind of worthwhile, here's the ones that really just need to go to the recycling companies because they're quote unquote "used up." But then that, that kind of helps us as well as the Ed Foundation, so I think it's been a good.
And they must still see value in that, receiving those donations, they're, it's working for them?
Yes, and, and they have, I'd have to go back and talk, but I had a conversation with their board, not, what was it, I guess it was last month during their strategic planning, and we had a bit of a discussion about it and just how they appreciate that partnership and it allows them to do some specific pieces. I believe a good chunk of that funds goes actually to the employee appreciation programs that they work with, the superintendent with to, to fund. So we definitely get the opportunity to kind of reap the benefits of it, so to speak.
Gotcha, okay, that's, thank you for that, appreciate it. And then last item on here, just to 4Cs trucking, both, two, two line items here, roughly over half a million each. Is that what the Matanzas project or do you know what those are? 4Cs trucking?
Can you tell me?
It is on page 10 and the number, it's about mid-page.
And Mr. Bush is here too.
327503.
Yes, that is for the parking lot improvements at FPC.
Okay.
Both of them.
Which is opening on Monday.
Which is wrapping up.
Okay, so.
The rain yesterday was a good test of it.
It was draining well and everything? Okay, good.
And we had strifing and curving.
That's great.
We did joke that if it wasn't open, Mr. Freeman's going to be standing out in that parking lot directing kids, measuring it just right. It's going to be open.
Great, that's exciting. So, all right, so if there are no further questions on 7.02, we'll move on to 7.03, request board approval for deletion of inventory. Does anybody have anything to add there? Okay, so we'll move on, 7.04, approval for professional development travel. It's pretty straightforward to me. Okay, so if there's no conversation there, did you have anything you wanted to add, Lieutenant? Okay, 7.05, purchasing policy.
And this will be Ms. Brock presenting this.
Yes, welcome, Ms. Brock.
I am here as a representative for some of the departments, district-wide, who are requesting an increase to the purchasing policies of policy 721. It was last updated in 2019, and we're asking our thresholds to be increased from $7,500 to $10,000, and then from $35,000 to $50,000.
And the $10,000 is for quotes, right?
The $10,000 would be for one informal quote, and then the $50,000 would be to bid and above. Currently, some of the, if you can scroll, please? Some of the benefits to increase the threshold would be streamlining some of the processes, reducing administrative burden. We could make faster decisions in our, in some of our purchases. We could increase our flexibility in our purchases that we are making cost savings, both on the administrative side and on the purchasing side, and improving vendor relations where our vendors would see faster turnaround in their payments, as well as better terms that they could possibly give us. So currently, our spending threshold for purchases needing three informal quotes is anything from $7,501 to $3,499, and we'd ask to increase that threshold to $50,000. Again, we'd create significant administrative savings. We'd be able to enhance the focus on some of our strategic purchases and go for a little bit of higher quality. It would reduce a little bit of the bottlenecks in some of the approval processes and it'd make purchases a little quicker instead of having to go through the whole entire bid process. It would benefit a lot of the departments currently, and we'll see on the next page. And we'd be able to make better bulk purchases for our departments. Some of the departments that would currently benefit immediately from these increases are both plant services and custodial. Increasing the thresholds would also help food services because they not only follow our purchasing thresholds, but they also follow the USDA guidelines, and the USDA guidelines allows micro purchases for them up to $50,000. So we kind of have a, an overlap in some of our purchases compared to what is followed by the USDA.
So with this, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but just a quick thought. So essentially, if there was a discounted pricing tier while you're ordering, the way we have it now, if it was above the $34,000, you couldn't go there even if there was a cost savings, right?
No.
So if we expanded that threshold, then from, from administrative level, you could immediately receive that cost savings by, with our purchasing power, right? Okay, so that's part of the reason why you're asking for this amongst some other efficiencies?
Plus, it would also allow us to not necessarily bypass a bid process, but if we want to get those savings immediately, we wouldn't have to go through the lengthy process of the bid process, which in, depending on the purchases we make, could take up to six months. So this is an outline of some of the surrounding school districts and their purchasing policies. Most of them are $50,000 and above in the districts that are surrounding us, including Volusia, St. John's, Seminole, Marion, Clay, and Brevard Counties. And so that makes it so that $50,000 and above, they have to go out for bid. They tend to be a little bit more shifted on the thresholds for the three informal quotes, but we're asking for $7,501 to $50,000 for that, or $49,989. And then with these requests, board policy 721 will have to be updated. And then with these requests, board policy seven twenty-one will have to be updated to coincide with the ten thousand and the fifty thousand requests, as well as there are some titles throughout the document that are quite redundant. And we would request recommendations for addressing those more or less. There's some that are, in some of the original documents, it lists chief financial officer or purchasing designee and it's just redundant throughout. We were wanting recommendations for replacement for that. As well as on July first of 2024, a anti-human trafficking bill was passed in the state of Florida. Currently, we are working on getting verbiage added to this because it will be mandatory for anything, for any contracts that are executed, renewed, or entered into from July first forward. So an affidavit will have to be signed by these vendors. So there will be verbiage that needs to be added to the board policy to reflect this. And then on the next couple of pages is the current board policy and it just shows outlined in red the areas that will need to be updated. We do not have the area for the affidavit highlighted yet, but we will for the next, for the next meeting, because we're still working on some of the verbiage for that.
We're working with legal on that to make sure we have the verbiage for the policy.
I figured that was coming from legal, so, okay, good. Right, anything else you'd like to add to your presentation?
No, sir.
All right, any questions?
Yeah, I'm just, I was curious looking at this, will we still be able to see purchases that go over fifty thousand or no, we would not see it?
Piggybacks, I do not believe are brought to the, is that correct, Dave? The piggybacks are not brought to the board?
No, piggybacks and anything that are on.
State contracts. So what the board will see is any bids that we need to solicit over fifty thousand dollars. Right now, you currently see bids over thirty-five thousand.
I like, I know it feels redundant all the time, but I do still like to look at it all and read through it. But you feel like we'll be able to save money this way?
Yes.
We brought this to the board a few years ago and this was our original intent to get to these levels. The then board wanted to just step it in with the cost of inflation, especially with plant services. It is, the thirty-five thousand is just not really doing what it should for efficiency purposes. Is that correct, Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
I'm looking here at the policy and the last revision was in 2019, so clearly pre-pandemic. We're talking about a difference in the threshold of about fifteen thousand on the bid side. So I think that's just with inflation and inflationary pressures that we've had, that's a reasonable latitude to give staff personally, that's what I feel. Just because the cost has gone up, it has to be relative to what things cost today. But yeah, we definitely want to maintain oversight, which we, you know, we can always look at these things, request reports for these here, but this would be more of a procedural for board meetings that we wouldn't see things that were less than fifty or less than ten in these two categories.
And they would see them, but in the purchase order.
For any of the over ten thousand, correct?
Like, as an example, I think the Sarah brothers are still under fifty thousand. Would we ever see that again or?
Well, the contract renewal for Sarah brothers in that example is brought to the board every year and they would always be in the purchase order report as you see. Obviously, it's delayed due to the timing of the board meeting, so we're always about two months into rears, but that will still come before you in a purchase order report.
Yes, we would not be bringing it before you, like using that example, if it was something that was forty thousand dollars, where we would have to bring that to you to go out for bid, we would not be coming to you in that format, but you still have oversight because you would see it on the purchase order.
All the purchase orders over ten thousand dollars would still, you're still gonna see those as you see them now.
So it'll be there, it's just, we've given you the permission to move forward with those and act without board approval.
Prior.
Prior, prior board approval.
Based on the thresholds.
Right, but then we will see it in these, in the line item report when they're dispersed or being.
When the purchase order is created.
When the purchase is created, okay.
Yes, it's usually not dispersed until months later.
Right, okay.
Yeah, in, in 2019, our, our threshold was five thousand and we requested ten thousand as Ms. Womack said, and we, board wanted us to incrementally and we went to seventy-five hundred and that was, you know, five, six years ago. And inflation has just increased so much.
I know it's not my department, but it, I'm just trying to like think of examples. Like, it doesn't mean somebody's gonna be trimming trees for forty-five thousand dollars, right?
No.
No.
Yeah, we, you know, what, go ahead.
We, you know, our, our three quotes, instead of, our three quotes was up to seventy-five or after seventy-five to thirty-five, we've moved that to ten thousand to fifty thousand. So we're still getting three quotes for tree trimming, you know.
Which we just did at FPC this past year.
That's right.
We still bid it out.
We're still, and we actually, we have contracts with.
With crew cut and.
With multiple vendors that allows us to, for different types of services, to pick and choose what service is the best cost for the best.
And so, but, and then anything under ten thousand would just need one quote.
That is great.
Well, I am happy to see this because, you know, I have also had meetings with Superintendent Moore and asked her to start looking at policies that are outdated or antiquated or where oversight is getting in the way of efficiency or cost savings, well intentioned but outdated for the reason it was originally approved. So this one here, to me, seems like a reasonable request moving forward and it looks like we could have, and we still have the oversight, but we're not holding up the process for these items that are literally probably in the same price point when these were put into place if we adjust them for inflation. So at the end of the day, it still accomplishes the same thing. So that's great to see this, this happen. I'd like to see more of these type of changes come forward in the future, too.
And once we finalize the language for the human trafficking affidavit, Ms. Brock will send that to the board members and highlight that additional change that's not shown here yet.
Very good. Okay, any other comments or questions regarding seven point zero five?
I'll talk to Patty Moore.
Okay, yeah, there's time. And also I would like this, at our next meeting, our next workshop, to just bring this forward just for a quick overview and just so that the other board members that aren't here today could chime in with some discussion if they have any questions.
So we just need to make sure that, we'll have that on the one o'clock and then it'll be on the six o'clock.
And it'll be to vote in the evening, okay.
May Chair Curry, if we're gonna bring this back, you know, you mentioned, and I really love how you put it, but you mentioned, you know, there being policies that really are almost working against us for what our goals are, like efficiencies, cost savings. If we're bringing it back anyway, you know, is there an opportunity for us to bring any other policies at that time that need to be looked at or is this kind of the one that bubbled to the top for now?
If you will, so we do have quite a few that are on for today, to revisit today. And then we have a few other policies that are in the pipeline per se that will be coming to you next month. So the next couple of meetings, you will see more policies that we need to update, be it for efficiency or for legislative updates.
Excellent.
Great, thank you Superintendent Moore. All right, so any other questions or comments? Okay, if not, then we will close this out. Thank you all. All right, so now we will move on to academic services, nine point zero one. We have Mr. Reynolds, Ms. Quinn, and Mr. Reeves, welcome.
Thank you Chairman Curry, board members, Superintendent Moore. We're here today to present to you the SIP plan for iFlagler for the K five component of our virtual classes and then turn things over to Mr. Reynolds and Ms. Quinn.
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
Yeah, so before you is the draft of the school improvement plan. Historically, we don't do a school-wide improvement plan for the seventy twenty-three side of iFlagler because of the way that we contract out those services through NIFAC. However, this year there was just enough students who were tested for a couple of our subgroups to be triggering a federal index and that federal, federal index hit a level that identified the school as CSI, which is comprehensive support and improvement through the Bureau of School Improvement with FDOE. So they are required to create a school-wide improvement plan and it has to be sent to the state after we approve it. So we typically will bring our school improvement plans to you guys in September, but there is a deadline for this one because it does have to be approved by the state board. So that is why we are bringing it to you during this month instead of September.
So which one qualified us? Was it that hitting the federal index that below forty-one?
It's actually the, this one was the overall federal index was below forty-one. It was at thirty-two percent.
And did that decrease from the previous year?
And historically, they haven't gotten the federal index because they haven't had enough students in the subgroups.
Oh, I see, it's because of enrollment that triggered it, okay.
Enrollment and assessment.
And, and if I, if I may, excuse me, so generally we're here before you for our seventy zero zero four virtual program, which is our secondary, six through twelve. Elementary, the population of students enrolled K five has been very low in previous years and the big push for the entire school of iFlagler virtual students was to hit our threshold for percentage tested at ninety-five percent so we can get a school grade. Since COVID, we haven't had enough families participating in state testing to meet that ninety-five percent mark. So last year was a big push to get students to come, so we've had enough students to come to test, which has triggered identifying, you know, some strengths and weakness or weaknesses in this case that we need to address.
So most of the enrollment historically has been more secondary, middle school, high school? Yeah, okay. And are we seeing, how many, either in the number of percentage, how many did we see move in that actually made this, you know, hit the radar?
Well, it might not be an overall increase in enrollment, it might just be if there's less than ten students in a specific subgroup, then it doesn't trigger a number.
Oh, I see.
So a couple of the subgroups.
But it's the subgroup itself.
Yep, a couple of the subgroups had more than ten this year, which triggered a federal index value.
Okay, so this kind of sets our new, you know, starting point in these subgroups where we need to start moving the needle, right? And what, what is this, in this improvement, what are the measures that we're taking to significantly make those improvements?
So the makeup of the school is a little bit challenging and we're working with leadership team to, to better solidify a plan moving forward. But specific to this plan would be explicit instruction. So in the virtual contract that we have with NIFAC, the teachers that are servicing our K five students are employed by Flagler County, which makes it a little challenging to monitor what is actually happening. So this plan would provide an interventionist that would be employed by Flagler County Schools and under my, my evaluation to make sure that they're providing explicit instruction. So that, that would be the step number one is to identify a person to be the interventionist to implement small in-person, face-to-face, explicit instruction, also implementing iReady. So we've used iReady as a tool, but it hasn't been something that's been required. It's been there as a tool for other grade levels except for third grade. So in requiring families to participate in iReady so that we can monitor diagnostic one and two and use the teacher toolkit as a supplemental resource to make sure the standards are being met in the curriculum for that. And then thirdly, making sure that we are keeping up with that school culture and climate and having them a place to come to feel supported and not isolated in there.
If I can add, the process of just progress monitoring, which is an emphasis of our governor as we're looking at our students progressing, and so ensuring that we're monitoring progress monitoring one, progress monitoring two, and looking at those indicators to see what other supports are needed and necessary to help those students be successful.
I think another thing outside of this school improvement plan is because of the number of students that are in this elementary group, this is a service that has been provided to, this is a service that we pay to be provided by NIFAC. And so what we're doing is adding additional services to these students, but we may have to consider bringing this program back under our direct umbrella and direct supervision so that it reflects what we want to see academically for our, for our students, to be completely blunt and transparent, you know, about it. That's not in the school improvement plan, that's not the place for it, but we have had meetings with NIFAC to express and get an understanding for the services that they are providing to these students and to make sure that it reflects what we want to see in the academic services that are provided to our students.
Okay, is that something we're planning on monitoring this, this school year? What is the, how are we monitoring that and how do we get to that decision?
Yes, so we're in the beginning stages of it right now. We've been working with some of our state partners as well. It may be something that we have to act, these things we will act on immediately, but the negotiation through that contract, there is not a timeline for it yet, but it may be sooner than later, really just as we analyze the information that we've just received and analyze this, like this is information that we're just getting. And so can we put a plan in place with NIFAC in order to get different results? And if we can't, then I think we have to come before the board to make a different decision.
And these, these local interventions, are they done virtually or in person when you make those, when you identify the need?
So it would be in person and so we have a big push. Part of the SIP plan is for a family commitment night where I'm going to be overly communicating with the parents about their commitment to, commit to doing these things and bringing their students to provide the interventions because although it's a little disheartening that the students didn't perform well, I think it's a, it's an opportune time to really understand what they are and are not learning and what they're able to show that they are learning. So it's a good opportunity for Flagler Schools to really identify these students and what their needs are and to provide those interventions. So it would be a face-to-face.
And this would mirror the practices that we already have in place for our secondary program that is a program that we, we, we provide a service for and it's not something that we've contracted the service out for.
And we're also working with Ms. Quinn on revising her, I'll call her manual procedures to make sure that it's clear about the process and understanding that commitment from not just the student and us, but also the parent and their involvement in this process. Because we are in a virtual setting, there is some, some expectations and pieces and parts of that that they have, especially when dealing with five, six, seven-year-olds and what the expectations are for them, but also the parents, the engagement to make sure that we're transparent in the process and clearly communicate how we're gonna help support moving forward.
Very good. Any further questions or comments?
I also just wanted to also clarify that this is a draft and so we will be working over the next couple of weeks as we continue those conversations with NIFAC and the state to perfect this before we bring it back to you on the twentieth.
Great, good to know. Thank you for adding that there. Okay, so we will move on now to, thank you, to nine point zero two. And that is the approval of the Flagler Youth Orchestra, the Flagler School, twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five.
These are the remaining contracts. We had a little bit of turnover. We had a couple of our instructors that sought and found some other opportunities to expand their horizons and so we've interviewed and replaced those individuals and then shifted one of our current employees in this process, Dr. Morales, to a larger presence for our organization for that. So before you are the, the three remaining contracts. Just as a reminder that the district's responsibility or commitment's still the same, that amount hasn't changed. There's a slight increase of about three hundred and four dollars from contract total this year to last year. We revised those contracts, looked them over closely to make sure that they were accurate, reflecting what we were doing. So the overall cost of the district is still the same and just a, not even a percent of an increase for their contracts. And they stayed below their contracts last year and were able to increase their internal account funds by several thousand dollars. So they have just over eleven thousand dollars in their internal accounts that they're using towards this coming year.
Yeah, and that is something I was, I had some questions on. So the, their effort is to raise, if I remember, it was around twenty thousand, right around in that range right there, that would come through ticket sales or promotions or however they would raise it, right? And has that number increased in, or their, their participation? You're saying it was eleven thousand left over in their internal account?
Mm-hmm.
Was that an overage of money raising?
Correct. So they're very careful with how they structured it. We worked very closely on this. And they had to draw about seventy-nine hundred dollars from their internal accounts to cover the balance, even though we said it could have been ninety-eight thousand, ninety-nine thousand dollars. It wasn't near that because there's events and things that took place where they did not have to have events or, or the practices taking place or just an overestimate from the original ones. So we worked closely to refine that. So they're starting off in a better position. So on top of the seventy-eight, eight eighty that the district's committed to, it's about seventy-nine hundred dollars more from the internal account to cover that. So even after covering that, they have eleven thousand dollars in their, in their internal account moving forward for the next year.
I'd, I'd like to see also that, you know, in time past, we had seen some, some version of that support that they raised and what that looked like.
Sure.
I think we need to continue that.
Absolutely.
I, I've read some of the, the, I went back into board docs and read some of the original statements made at board meetings regarding the, the youth orchestra when it was first formed. And there was a goal from the previous director at some point that this could be also a self-funded, you know, initiative through, through, through raising support, right?
Right.
It, it obviously didn't, hasn't gotten there, and I think they're doing a good job of working it. But I, I'd like to see that we continue to look at that because, I mean, it's, what we've, what we've committed, I feel very comfortable with. But as costs go up, right, we need to start looking at that. Very encouraging what I just heard that they, it seems like they're exceeding expectations, but then how that gets applied in the future.
So we've already had some conversations around this. We have explored and talked about and are raising our ticket prices slightly. They haven't risen in years. And so we made that adjustment. And then we're looking at some structures that we're going to work with finance. And this is superintendent on as far as for going into the next year because we have out of county people joining us in this endeavor, looking at fee structure potentially for that as well as what we're doing internally for dollars. So we are exploring those options to begin to look at that.
Great. Any other questions on that?
I was looking at what these positions are for, but I see it now.
All right, so then we will move on to nine point zero three. This is the Emory Riddle Aeronautical University for dual enrollment.
Yes, so before you today is our typical amendment agreement to our articulation agreement. And it outlines and specifically our, our fee structure, Statement of Work and Balance. And just for some clarity and transparency, what we learned this last spring was is their billing to us was not accurate to our advantage over the past several years. Ms. McCormick and I had several conversations about this, and they are not going back-to-back bill us for anything. But moving forward, and the, the part in particular that was in question or corrected was the percent, right? We were supposed to pay fifty percent of the fee structure for the faculty, and they weren't charging us the correct number of sections for that. So in the past, where we may have had six sections, right, they should have billed us for three, which is half, and they were only billing us for two. So about five thousand fifty-two hundred dollars a year less. So that's been corrected, obviously, and, and moving that forward. So there is an increase in the cost, but I want to explain something to that as well. So we worked very diligently with them this year. There was some situations for, for instructors. And so with that, we have a commitment from them to maintain their presence at Flagler Palm Coast High School for their two courses, or two sections, four courses that they're teaching there and working diligently to address Matanzas High School. We previously had a course set up and stood up over there. Part of the agreement is, is that they understand that if they aren't able to stand it up, that this document is going to be amended and adjusted accordingly. So if that was the case, then this would be approximately fifty-five hundred or so dollars less than what you see before you. But the goal is to try and maintain this program. It's a valued program for us, and we see that. Ms. Hufman sees it as well for, for Matanzas and understands the situation that Emory Riddles in. And we're working diligently to make sure we can stand this up for the second semester moving forward and then beyond.
Yeah, you know, with, with a growing space program, you know, short drive from here, leading into these areas, maybe expanding into, into some areas that has to do more with, you know, the likes of, you know, SpaceX and other, other entities down there, NASA, could be a great place to, to grow in here. Are we seeing good participation in, in this here?
So, so we were just, this last week, had an opportunity with Blue Horizon, Lockheed Martin, NASA, about twenty different districts around the state. We're at the NASA visitor center, and we were represented as well, where we had MOU signing opportunity with them to look for opportunities to grow that. And we've been in touch with their contact, Ms. Karen Huffman, to expand that opportunity and build on that moving forward. This all ties into our superintendent's vision of Diploma Plus and trying to find those avenues to pursue to help our students find ways to connect.
Yeah, that, that's encouraging. We, because, you know, these are, these are high-paying jobs that are right here in our backyard. And if our students could be prepared for, you know, an entry level right out of the gate and grow within an organization or be set ahead for their higher education in this area, that puts them at a great advantage.
Absolutely. And we, and there's a phrase used that you don't have to be a rocket scientist working in space. There is a plethora of avenues and, and small engines and all kinds of opportunities for students. And so we're exploring all of that, all the above, to make those opportunities present for our students and our community.
Okay.
So can I ask something real quick on that?
Yes, absolutely. Go right ahead, Ms..
Thank you. So something I think we've talked about before as a board, but Mr. Reeves, while you're there and certainly Superintendent Moore. The kiddos that I'm always concerned about are the ones who, you know, whose parents are not really already engaged. They're maybe not at a, a place of being as responsible as they need to be, you know, in their life. And what are we doing, if anything, today to kind of maybe make an extra effort with, with that group of parents and with that group of students to make sure that they are aware of these really great programs that are available? Because I know when I was applying for office, I encountered all kinds of families where the kids were in all of the programs and, you know, they came from families where the parents are very engaged. And so I'm not, not worried about those guys. Like they, they're very supportive and they're on a, a great path. I just want to, I just, I think a lot about those who, you know, it's not working to send no home or, you know, they have a parent who's not checking Facebook. Like, is there anything that we're doing today for those groups?
Absolutely, we're, I'm sorry.
You know, I gladly will speak about your thing.
Well, there's, there's a, a number of things we're looking at. And being in junior high, was we talk about our middle school students and preparing them tours to the campuses with their families and opening the doors more to allow them to get, I call it boots on the ground, but to see the programs, to experience the things that they can see, those pieces and parts, and the connectedness, right? Because it's always about what's in it for me when they're looking at these opportunities. And if they can make the connections to how it applies to them, they're more likely to stick. And so it is a full-court press as we talk about Diploma Plus and as far as giving our parents and our community and our, our students those opportunities to see and experience and find, see the connectedness to us and beyond, to whether it's with NASA, college, or working with the state with career opportunities for, for certification opportunities. All those things play a part in that, and we're working towards that process to expand those opportunities for our families.
And I think I could just add, last school year, we spent a lot of time helping make sure that our staff understood why this was important and how this also equates to our school grade. When we talk about being a, a high-performing district, specifically an A-rated district, this is an area we have to improve in. Right now, we sit with about fifty percent of our students taking advantage of these opportunities. And so when we talk about Diploma Plus, we spend a lot of time making sure our, our leaders within our school district understood what that, that means. Anytime I go out for Flagler Forward, this is what we're talking about. What does it really mean for Diploma Plus? How does this help our students? How does this help our families as well? And so now this year, our focus is bringing that to our families and bring it to our students because now we've trained so many of our, much of our workforce that our workforce can really talk to it. And so we are doing, at both of our middle schools this year, we're doing a career days that are focused on bringing our high schools to our middle schools so that our students can get connected with the programs that we, we offer and the opportunities that we, we offer through that. We are doing tours specifically for our eighth graders to go to our camp, our high school campuses and see these different programs in action. I have a date scheduled this fall at every one of our schools to go and join one of their family events to talk about this specifically with their families. We've developed a communication, a, a communication plan to push this information out to families, also to ensure that it's represented well on our, on our website. This, in January or February, we're going to do a large, community-wide career day. And when we say career, it's college career as well for our high school students. It's going to be off-site. We're going to be bringing our juniors and our seniors off-site. We're going to be bringing community, workforce, our colleges. I mean, just a huge event that we're planning for, for our students. And so one of our go-to, actually, of our strategic plan talks about the access that we're going to provide. But what I've found is that the access has been very passive. And so now we have to make that access very active to ensure that individuals know what we offer. And so using the language that our middle school students should not be selecting their high school because this is where my parent went, or my cousin went, or my friends are going, or even where I'm zoned. But they should be making selection around where they're going to go based on the programs that are offered at that school. And so last year, we really focused on our staff, making sure our staff understood what this, what this means. And now this year, where we have a plan going to our students and to their, to our families. We spend a lot of time educating our community. So you hear our community now talking about Diploma Plus. And so now we need to really make sure that our families and our students understand that, and that is our push and our plan for this year.
We included that.
It's like you thought about this or something.
Just a little bit.
We also review data and information from the state of Florida that they provide us about industries in the top ten in our community and looking for those connections and opportunities. So that we're always looking forward, not backwards, as we're trying to build our programs because it takes a couple of years to put something into place. Engineering, advanced manufacturing, those type of programs take a while to build. And so we're always looking forward to see what opportunities are coming that the state is recognizing for our region.
And really understanding, like when we understand our school grade, all of the work we're doing right now, all of the work we will do this year is all lagging. We won't see the results of this work for two years. And so helping people to see the urgency of it now, not just from the lens of school grades, but for our students and how this is going to help our students, how it's going to help our students, but how it's going to accomplish what the mission and vision is for this organization. And it talks about us being the premier learning organization where all of our students graduate with the skills necessary to reach their maximum potential. And they're not going to do that if they're just graduating with a high school diploma. So we have to continue to bring more of these programs on. And we also have to off-board, which is a harder conversation, off-board some of the programs that are not being successful, be it that the community, the, the demand from the community isn't there or that the student interest isn't there either. And that's the harder conversation.
Sure, but a necessary one.
Yes.
Well, and since you brought it up, Sally, in this agreement with Emory Riddle, for fall, for parents and students may be listening right now, we have Principles of Aeronautical Science. We have Private Pilot Operations, and these are both at FPC. And then in spring, at FPC, we have Uncrewed Aircraft Systems, Private Pilot Operation. And at Matanzas, Principles of Aeronautical Science. So some great, great courses there, okay?
Well, and if I can just continue with this for a second. Are there, and forgive me Superintendent Moore, you already spoke to this, but as far as like a tool for parents or even for, for teachers to use, you know, so Chair Curry, like the programs that you just mentioned, you know, I'm hearing like STEM, right? Like I'm hearing someone who's mathematically, mathematically inclined or engineering. You know, do we have tools out there for parents that say, hey, if you observe your student, your child with these qualities, right? These skills, these, oh, I'm, my mind is not working today, these attributes. Like this is, this might be a good avenue for them. Like what, and, or like, I say both teachers and parents, but I mean, like for teachers in the classroom to kind of be looking out for, oh, this student seems like, you know, she or he would be good at this. And maybe it's a personal phone call to a parent to say, hey, I observed this. Do you know about that? I just, I, I, I know I'm repeating myself. It's just my heart goes out to students who, whether, you know, their mom and dad are working three jobs or, you know, just, and they don't necessarily have that support of somebody, you know, saying, hey, I've observed these talents of yours, and this is something that you should think about. Especially because this is, I mean, this is like a, a free way for them to really catapult themselves, Superintendent Moore, to your point, you know, into a successful future. So I know, I know I'm repeating myself. I just, you know, it sounds like you are doing so much that is so wonderful. I just, you make sure we're always focused on meeting people where they are and finding that, you know, and have remind them of them coming to us.
It's a great question. And last year, the state of Florida put in place this called Zello, and that's S-E-L-L-O. And it's a platform. It was, they had one and they revised it and made it fun and more upbeat to engage our ju, our middle school students more appropriately. But it is, you know, I'll say a interest survey, talent survey, right? To kind of data mine that information of students that, hey, Jeff likes to do work on his car. He works on a lawnmower, right? And finding those avenues. And then we provide the parents that information and feedback to kind of help guide those conversations. So yes, the state of Florida has put that in place, and we started that this last year to do that through our middle schools. And of course, our school counselors with our high school students, they meet regularly and often about the next steps of their career opportunities for them, whether it's college or a career, to help guide those conversations.
And putting, like, we can pull reports. And so it's been about having a conversation around what does access really look like? And pulling reports and identifying students who are not taking advantage of these opportunities. And then that number dwindles, right? And then we can go directly to those families, to those students to ensure that they are taking advantage of the opportunities that we have. Really, the student population that we have to contain, I'm sorry, I just put a minute in my mouth, but the student population we have to continue to, to really focus on and look at too are the students that have to take remedial courses because their electives and their opportunities, they shrink some. And so we have to be very strategic to, to plan for those students first and get those students in. What we know is that some of our higher performing students, not only are they taking advantage of these opportunities, they're taking advantage of multiple of them. We have students that are leaving with their AA. They have their military designation, and they've gotten the industry certification. and they've gotten an industry certification or two under their belt as well. So we have a population of students that are taking advantage, but do we have a, what are the things that we are doing for the population that is not doing it at all? And so that really has been our focus last year, is creating those structures, so that we can identify who those students are, and then meet with them, meet with their families, so we can get the students connected. And I'm very excited about that work for this coming year, because we'll see that.
That's just great job Superintendent Moore and Mr. Reeves, that's just great.
I just think it's awesome, just that our children have these opportunities now, something we didn't have 20 years ago. It's just awesome that before they turn 18, they're exposed to this, so they get an idea of what they want to do with the rest of their life.
In a safe space, right? They can take risks, but in a safe space to make decisions. And I think that's, that's equally important, to find out what not to do, as to what to do, and.
And if they never use it, they still have the skills and have obtained the skills necessary for them to work in, in, in the, in, in other jobs and in other industries. We just gotta make sure that we have a system for, for getting it to a larger base of students, and that's really our focus for this coming year.
When the Ad Foundation does their tours, do they highlight some of these things here?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And we spent a lot of time this year, well, we just, we brought tours back, because we weren't doing tours. And so, that's been a little bit of a growing pain. Our, our schools are now getting into the rhythm of that. So every month, we're gonna be bringing our community and our families into our schools to see. And so if someone is interested in going on a tour, they can get those dates through our Flagler Education Foundation. Because oftentimes, even families, what they envision of different programs is equivalent to what they have experienced. So, when we talk about culinary, oftentimes, people think they're gonna go into a classroom, it's gonna be like one stove, and then, just like the sink that's in every other classroom. They don't realize that our students are learning in industrial spaces, with industrial stove, and, and, you know, refrigerators and vents, and all these different things that they would see in a commercial environment. And so that's what we often hear from families when they come in, or from our community, that's not what they expected. So making sure that our families can, can see that. And how do we do that at a larger scale? So we partner with the Education Foundation. A few years ago, we did videos of all of our programs. And so how, we're gonna be doing those videos again, so that can be showcased on our website. We offer all of these programs, but we don't really do a good job, or haven't done a good job, of really making sure that they are highlighted on our website and in other places that are easily accessible for our families, so that people know what we do offer.
I think your point is more, we have to market well, right? We have to sell ourselves. It just doesn't happen by this, well, my door is open, right? And so, but I think it's a great opportunity, because, and I think our schools are up for that, because we've done it before. COVID and other things have happened to us, and it's just a retooling and moving forward for it. So we're excited about the opportunities coming this year.
Great. Okay, so we will move on to 9.04, Nefec 2024-25 Professional Learning Catalog.
This is our learning catalog that we provide for our staff, that allows them to work on their certifications, and to maintain or explore new ones. And so this is a service provided to us through Nefec, and the courses each year are outlined, and I added the adjustments in there, you can see. I wasn't gonna upload it, it's like 90-some pages long, if anyone knew that to you. But I updated for you just that you knew that, the appendices and the overview is provided, as well as revisions that they're looking to add this year to enhance their offerings, to support our teachers and staff.
And we have to submit a professional learning catalog to the state, and this is a service that Nefec provides a part of our contract for us. It's, it's a big task, and they provide this service for us.
So we see, we receive a good benefit from this.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
I only bring that up because it has been discussed by the board about starting to look at the, since we're kind of on an à la carte basis with Nefec, you know, start looking at these services that, is it, is it really time for us to take some of those on ourself? Could we have more efficiency or benefit? Or is it still better to outsource it to them, right?
This is a great benefit that they provide to us.
Okay, so.
So it's, it stands up well for us.
Good to know, that's encouraging.
And to just take advantage of it.
Great. Any questions? Okay, so we will move on, 9.05, Travel Consent.
Sir, a few things before you tonight. One is out-of-state travel for Mr. Scott Reynolds. He is a member on the National Conference for Math, and he traveled last year, and this is his travel for this coming year, and there is no cost for that, because he is on the board. So I just wanted to put that before you today. Any questions?
No. Okay, so then we will move on to 9.06.
So we have.
Out-of-state travel.
Out-of-state travel. So we have four things for you today. There's two from Metansys and two from FPC. Metansys is volleyball. They're going to be traveling, and looking forward to their opportunity for, I'll say, it's a conference, or a, it's a.
Competition.
Thank you very much for that, competition, at the Alatros Sports Event Center. It's just great exposure for our students to have those opportunities to take, as it were, to highlight their abilities against other schools, but also to sharpen their skills. So there's that one, that is for the, the end of this month, the 29th, and they have another one on September 13th at the Jacksonville Arena for them, all being paid for out of their internal booster accounts.
Okay. Any questions regarding out-of-state travel?
And then there's two more requests for FPC, both from cross-country. Mr. Halliday, he's always on the go, and those are for a trip to Tallahassee in September, and there's another trip to Georgia that is in September as well. These also are paid for out of the internal accounts.
Okay.
Georgia, or is that the one for New York?
No, this is center.
They have some other travel.
They have some more coming. I didn't double-check, but they're not the ones I was looking.
Okay.
There's more coming, there's more coming. But it gives, and these are just phenomenal opportunities for our students to see and expose, and be exposed to some great things across our country and across our state. So we're excited for that for them.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Reeves.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to Operational Services, 10.01. We have Stu Lan, welcome.
Good afternoon, Chair, School Board members, Superintendent Moore. The last time I was at this table regarding the ECG screenings was back in May, and I'm here today to present four proposal, proposed policies, and really seeking that the board, seeking direction of the board to narrow down to the proposed policy that we will take out for advertisement, that we could utilize for our ECG policy. So, the first one would be, they are all would be modification of, of School Board Policy 4.06.1. And the last time that this policy was revised was in 2012. So the first policy, is this option one? Yep. Option one would have, any student athlete willing, wanting to participate in high school athletics must complete the, the report, the ECG, prior to each year, and so prior to the first athletic sport in their high school. And then, it would also include that parent had the option to decline. So they would have an ECG screening prior to participation in his or her first athletic sport. It would be each year for option one. Option two, the student would complete an ECG once during his or her four years of participation, once again, allowing a parent to decline the ECG screening for athletic participation. Option three would participate in the ECD, ECG screening once during his or her four years of participation.
I looked at these earlier, but I forgot the difference.
I'm looking at the difference between three and four. I apologize, but there was a difference. Oh, I'm sorry. Option, there it is. I had to find the option. Option two, any student in ninth and 11th. So we would focus on our ninth-grade students and our 11th-grade students in, in option, option two. So option three would be all students, ninth through 12th grade, once in their four years.
So option one is annual, option two, ninth and 11th, and then option.
Three would be all students, ninth through 12th, once.
But then ninth and 11th, wasn't that also like once?
Yeah, so they would do it, enter in their ninth-grade year, and then entering their.
Once in the four years.
And was that, that if they're though new to Flagler Schools, so like if they're in, like 12th grade, but they're new to Flagler Schools, they would then still do it if you opted for option two?
Yeah, that, that would be accurate, Ms. Hunt. So if they, if they were new to Flagler Schools and they never participated in the ECG screening, we, we would still, we would.
If they're in the off-grade year, yeah. So if they're 10th or 12th grade, and they're new, they would automatically have to get it.
And then, the, the last, the last option would, would really just modify in our, our policy, just saying annually, Flagler Schools shall offer one opportunity each year, which we currently do through our partnership with Advent Health, but we would still continue to offer the, the opportunity for our parents and our student athletes to participate in an ECG screening. And we would just have it written in policy that we would continue out with this opportunity, regardless where our partnership is at.
Tommy, does Advent Health have more recommendation?
So, in the presentation of the ECG screening, that when Mr. Nation did come to the, before the board, there was something that was proposed. It was an optional ECG screening, and then required in year two for all students, and then year three, there was going to be direction, whether it be everyone, or ninth and 11th grade students. So that was, that's what he presented to this board. So Advent did have a, a recommendation of, of an opt-out year, really more of providing information to our families, something that, that we, we really have been doing through our annual physical exams with them, and our screenings. But then, in, in 2025, when, when it comes time for that year, 25, 26 school year, that would be the board direction, whether it be all students, no matter what year they are in, and then actually, year three. So they would then go ninth and 11th. So that was their recommendation.
I'm torn between annually or once every four years, because it's rare that things would change for a child, but it's a possibility.
Right. Something that, you know, is something that we, we would definitely have to consider is, is, is working with, with our Advent Health and our partners, where that, where they, if there was something, a red flag that would, would flare up, you know, we would have to, our student athletes would then go, obviously, to Jacksonville, Orlando, to a professional in that area. That's, that is the two locations where they would, they would go to. And then we really got to consider next steps, if, if they do, you know, Advent Health and Mr. Nation, and they did present that, our, our athletic trainers, they're more than willing to, to get them trained in how to perform ECGs, and then having the professionals read that ECG screening. That's what they do right now with our athletic screenings. There is a professional that reads the screening once it's done, which is performed. Or do we, we partner with Who We Play For Foundation, which they do have a, a low-cost screening that was presented to the board many years, well, three or four years ago. So there are options out there, if they miss that annual physical, in, that is hosted here in the district every year. You know, even talking about, you know, if our, if our student athletes miss our, our physical here, there are other opportunities. There's, Advent Health does, with its partnerships with delicious schools, they partner with Orange County Schools. So there, there are options. I, I think that they're, they're good community partners when it comes to this, whatever the board decides to, whatever direction they do decide to go into. I, I do believe Advent and Eric Nation would, would be more than willing to accommodate those student athletes that, that miss that annual physical.
Are people taking advantage of it?
They are. Yeah, yeah, there was, there was positive numbers on that.
It's not overwhelming, is it? Is it realistic to, every year, we gotta do this? You know what I mean?
It's not. There, there would be, there would be some work with our athletic directors on, on, on the lift of that. That would just be their responsibility before that student athlete does get on that field, just that extra step of verification. I do know that both, both high schools right now, they use athletic clearance, which they have now moved away from, from the pen and paper base, but it's more of a, it would just be verifying that step before they, they set foot on that field.
Okay, so just, just to, we have, we know, we have a starting point, and we're gonna go somewhere with this, right? So, right now, the, the number four policy, it most resembles what we're doing right now, right?
Correct.
What we're doing right now is we're, the, the physical is required, but through our partnership with Advent, they're providing the screening, the additional screening, at no cost to students on, on that same day of that physical when they do those, right? So it is available, it's at no cost, and it's open to, to anyone that wants it, that's participating. So is this, is, this is not a requirement, though, of the FHSAA, right? Which is the Florida High School, you know, Athletic Association. So they do require them have a physical, right? So, I will say that as a parent, having this opportunity, if I was there with, with my child, personally, I would say, hey, this is probably a good idea to have this screening. But I think this, again, boils down to parental rights. And to me, this looks like a mandate, and it's a, it's a, it's a, could be a barrier to athletics. And I believe that the affected group here is about, is it, is about 3%. What was the, what was, do you know what the stats were on, on that, on students that were affected by this?
Do you believe he had it in his original presentation? One in 300 students have an undetected heart condition.
So, that is a, so we're already, as a school and a community, addressing that by making that available. The parents, you know, we all say like, well, why wouldn't you want to do that, right? Well, maybe a parent has a reason why they, they wouldn't want to do that. And I, and from, from my perspective, is that we have something that's working. We, we have it available, available to our students to, to do this screening, and let the parents choose if that's what they think is best for their child. Especially, this is, this would be additional policy over, over and above what is required by the Florida High School Athletic Association. So I'm, I'm personally not inclined to add any other mandates or barriers to athletics for our students. So that, that's where I stand in it. But I think it's a great idea, and parents, you decide yourself, but that's just my position on this here.
So I, I do want to just add one thing, some information that Mr. Nation did provide us. This year, 628 athletes received a free physical, which was up from 517 student athletes. Of the 628, 506 of those elected to participate in ECG, which is 81% of the student athletes in attendance.
I, I have to look at this from a liability perspective as a practitioner, that I'd rather at least require something once a year would be option to opt out, and say, no, I'd rather not do that, than have not done it at all, if something ever happened to a child and we, you know, going back to the school board, well, they never required it, like, I just, I think of those things. So, they still have the option as, to, as a parent, to opt their child out of it. But that's just.
Yeah, but again, we're, we're adding additional barriers, because, you know, again, what happens? That's that one day, right, that they have to, they have to have it for free. But again, I've already stated my, my position on it. I, I think that what we have now is working well. It, it gives access, and it, it, it addresses a, a problem that is, that is affecting a small percentage out there. And it's not like we're doing nothing. It's not like saying we're not, we're not having any screen or not, but to force it, or to, it should, it should, it should, I just like the way that it, as it, as it is now, but.
So when do we have to pick one of these? Is this gonna be like an action?
So, I, I, I actually, because we're, this is not something we're necessarily in a rush to do. because we're, this is not something we're necessarily in a rush to do. What I would say is, you know, if we can bring this back, um, next month, when, um, maybe we have a full board, to narrow it down to take off what you absolutely do not want to see, so that we don't put you in a board in a position to make a decision in a, um, in a workshop and 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 outside of a board meeting. Um, is what I'm thinking, Mr. Delaney, but you could definitely correct me on that. I think you bring, we need to bring it back. Narrow, you know, drop a cou- we have four options, drop a couple of those options off of what you absolutely do not want to see. Like, if I'm listening to the board, I'm assuming you don't want to see every year they must have it. So that may be something we want to drop. Then we can get it down to two, and then we can actually go to you, um, in a bo- in a business meeting where you can make a decision that's not predetermined at this table, but, you know, I will default to Mr. Delaney.
Yes, Ben, let's put out a recommendation.
Can somebody clarify though? I'm a little bit confused. I thought we already voted on this in a business meeting and that now we're just clarifying what this, what all this will be. Are we still, are we still deciding that whether we're going to? Like, I thought we already voted on that it was going, we were gonna require it and that there would be an opt-out. Am I?
No, we didn't vote on anything. We've just discussed it.
Yeah, so at the last meeting, the direction that you gave to us, um, for us to draft language that includes the opt-out in every single one of them and then comes with different options. So this is that meeting where we're bringing before you some options. We'll bring it back again, where we can narrow down the options and then come before you with, um, some options for you to consider with the understanding that you as a board can always decide to, um, just stay, stay where you are, if that is the 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 pleasure of the board.
Yeah, I mean, I know in previous conversations, I really tried to bring this, bring this kind of into the mindfulness of like, why do we even have annual physicals? Um, you know, what are the importance of those? And is, you know, the EKG, ECG really just part of that? Um, and and making sure that our students are safe and that they're doing every year? So, um, I would say, thinking about the comments that, um, certainly Colleen has made, I I don't think at this time we would want to pick off the table, um, annual. I'm not saying that that's what we would go with, but I I don't think that one is ready to come off the table, um, without hearing from, uh, Sheriff Colleen.
Yeah, so we will bring this back before you, and then that's what we will work on, is kind of narrowing it down to what would be okay to go before you for some selection without putting you in a compromising situation at at this table.
And I want to hear from the other board members again, but I'll just put it out there, um, just my own, I'm leaning towards option three, just at least once a year. Uh, it's summertime. I do physicals at my office now. Like I said, not a lot changes year to year, but, um, at least annual or, uh, once in four years, yeah. It's just, but we'll see. We'll talk it out.
Tommy, can you repeat that one again? So Christie just said, and I mean, obviously Christie's opinion, I I'm gonna listen to quite highly because of her, um, background. But so can you read the one that Christie is is thinking is best at this point?
Yeah, absolutely. So any student wanting wanting to participate in high school athletics must complete the cardiology report, E C, or ECG participation form once during his or her four years of participation. Uh, the student athletics packet must have a ECG screening prior to participation, or parent guardians wishing to decline the ECG screening must submit each year prior to athletic participation.
So it would be one time in their high school career, so either their the first year or when they first entered Flagler schools?
Correct. And if and if they, uh, they decline ninth grade, the the parents, we we would ask parents to decline tenth grade, eleventh grade, and then twelfth grade here as well.
Okay, is that all you have to say, Ms. H? All right. Okay.
Thank you very much. I, I guess the only thing I would say is whatever we do decide to put out there and advertise, and I I would appreciate just running it by. What is our, what is our wonderful guys that you over at Advent Health?
Uh, Eric Nason and and, uh, Mr. Wally.
Yeah, Wally's the CEO or CFO. Um, is that, did you say Eric?
Eric.
Yeah, I mean, I would just ask whatever we go with, and I would obviously want their kind of seal of approval of yes, they feel like that is a, that is safeguarding our kids.
Okay.
And I'll just say one more thing. You know, when when I was elected, I I made a promise to those who voted for me that I would not vote for mandates. And this is a local mandate. And, uh, it's a slippery slope when we start going down this road, because it starts with this one and then another one and another one. So just cautioning everyone that once you open these doors, uh, you might see more and more slide in in the future. So, uh, you know, have this come down from the Department of Education, from the Athletic Board. Uh, you know, we we would comply, I would comply because that is a directive. Um, but I I don't think we should be putting in mandates like this at the local level, so.
Well, I'm just, I mean, Sheriff Hurry, I like, I always appreciate, um, your feedback on things. I guess I I very rarely, um, would would comment on something that you say. But I just want to share with you, something that you kind of hear me say often, is I'm I'm very mindful of our parents who are working three jobs. I mean, they have a daytime job, a lot of them actually work for our schools, um, and then they deliver pizzas at night, and they're doing Instacart on the weekends. And, um, you know, I I I really appreciate your your thoughts on this. Where I'm coming from is, um, in this kind of parental rights and 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 choice, I just, um, I I need to kind of think about our students and, you know, what if they are in a family that doesn't have the flexibility that my family has, um, to, you know, be aware of this stuff. And, um, I think for our students, I like this because it it makes sure that they're protected. Even again, if you're in a family where, you know, mom and dad just do not have the capacity to not top of something like.
Um, Will, if you also, if you want to revisit some of these other things, I'd be glad to join you on some of those. Like, I personally don't like flu shots because there's room for error and that's, um, something that's invasive, but, um, yeah, I think there's other things.
I mean, for sure, I mean, but right now, it's, we're talking about this right now, and I'm, that's all I'm talking about. And that is just my concern, is again, once you open the door for this, then what's the next one that comes down the line? And and, uh, it's, it's, uh, we're putting at the local level, we're instituting a mandate that's not being asked by the state um, eh, for something that's, and it's, it's not even a crisis thing, it is a cautionary thing. But it it is not as if we were saying, should we offer this or not? It is, should we require it or not, right? Right now, we make it available for free through our partnership with Advent, and I think that's wonderful. It's open, it has a high participation. It's not like people aren't doing it, like they don't, they don't know this exists. Um, they're using it, they're doing it, right? Um, so that in itself mitigates, I mean, eighty percent participation, that that's huge, uh, for any type of, um, you know, offering. So that's just, that that's just my 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 position, so, but.
Yeah, no, can you, can you clear, because I just, I'd love your thought on it. As, because, you know, I think all of us, um, who would like to see this be, um, required are in favor of there being that parent opt-out. Can you, I just, I would love your thoughts on there being an opt-out. Why that, why that you feel is still in conflict? Um, and then I, and then the other piece I wanted to ask is, just in case anybody's listening, Superintendent Moore, can you also address what Christie said? Do we today, uh, make it mandatory to inject students with a flu vaccine?
No, we don't. It it's a parent opt-out, but we've had, there's been a mistake in the past, um, and it's something that we.
Opt-out, it's not opt-in?
It's opt-in.
Yeah, there's just to me a huge difference between opt-out and opt-in.
Well, again, we're going down into into different things. Right now, we're just talking about this, right? And so we could talk about flu shots and things on another, um, day. But just to answer your question, Sally, my position is that I do not believe that we should be putting in mandates at the local level like this. That is the reason, whether or not you you feel or another board member feels that the opt-out is sufficient, I'm just saying, uh, from the outset that we should not be putting in these type of mandates, um, at the local level. That that is where, uh, my position is, and that is why I would be opposed to that.
Yeah, just like the the general idea of, um, of the mandate, just the fact that it's it's a mandate.
Absolutely, yep.
All right, I I guess I should say I understand where you're coming from.
Okay.
I'll add this, uh, one final comment. Um, the FHSA does have a sports medicine advisory committee. Uh, their next meeting is August twentieth. I'll make sure myself and our two athletic directors tune in on that, uh, meeting um, to see if there's any comments, uh, that have been brought up regarding ECG screenings. Uh, because if you're not aware, uh, when some sort of committee like this through the FHSA will then go to the Board of Directors, and then once the Board of Directors do approve this, then it has to go through the Department of Education, State Board of Education to formally adopt those, uh, that those recommendations.
But these, that's the other thing, is that this, we weren't really having this conversation as a board came to us, right? Um, so this initially was a recommendation from the, from Advent Health, right? So again, this is a, this is a a a, uh, medical organization asking us to add a mandate here. We weren't even, we weren't even thinking about it. Okay, fine, they brought the idea forward. Um, but, uh, again, it is, it it boils down to, you know, a medical mandate uh, a potential barrier for some for sports. And I, that that is the reason why I can, can't support it as, in in those versions anyways, so. Okay?
Absolutely.
So if there are any other comments, we can move on to the next agenda item. Um, okay, so we're going to ten point zero-two, life, safety, casualty inspection.
All right, so, uh, prior to July one twenty, uh, two thousand and eleven, Florida statute one zero one three point one-two required, uh, two fire safety inspections at each school district, district facility, including charter schools, one fire safety inspection, uh, by school district staff and one by the local county. Um, we we, uh, we appreciate our our partnership with Flagler County Fire Rescue. Uh, and the city of Palm Coast Fire Rescue, they they do, uh, conduct these inspections for us. Um, and then they provide the that feedback to us on where we have deficiencies at, um, and then where we need to seek improvement at. Um, on on page two, if you can open that, you can see, um, that there has been a decline in deficiencies and there is no deficiencies remaining on, uh, at any of our sites. Um, so all of our, uh, minor deficiencies that can be handled at the school-based level uh, regarding maybe something was blocking an exit, um, that that is just a failed violation that is communicated with the schools. Uh, so when, uh, those inspectors do go back out to to visit those sites, uh, they send the follow-up inspection that there is no deficiencies, uh, at remaining. Um, if it's something major, uh, our our plant services team, uh, will will correct those deficiencies. Um, so when the reinspection does occur, uh, our plant services team ha- has already made those, uh, those changes. Uh, so it is, it is required to get, um, per statute to go before the board, um, to, every year.
Okay. Uh, are there any questions on or comments on this agenda item? Okay, hearing that, we'll move on to ten point zero-three, uh, approval for district five-year capital. Mr. Bush, thank you, Mr. Wilain. Welcome, Mr. Bush.
Welcome. Good afternoon, Sheriff Hurry, Board, Superintendent Moore. Um, I present to you the tentative twenty-four, twenty-five, five-year capital plan. This plan, this capital plan will also be used with the five-year work plan that we will submit with DOE. Hopefully, that will come out October first, but if you remember, last year that was delayed some. And the the first year of the five-year capital plan is the actual adopted budget for the district. Any questions?
So as of right now, we don't have any new schools planned, right?
That is correct. Um, at our, when we looked at it in October of last year, our numbers, it was, um, twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty um, is what is projected as of right now.
So I know I'm going like way out, but just something I've been curious about is this whole new development going in Banelle that's supposed to be like, what, like six thousand houses or something? And, uh, like, are we involved in that yet and talking to people, um, those developers?
Yes, uh, William Whitson, our our planner, and and Mr. Freeman are involved. He, yeah, William attends the meetings with the Banelle, um, dealing with them. I don't know if it's monthly or quarterly when they meet, I'm not sure.
That's Hawk Creek is is what development, uh, that is, and we just met with them, uh, last week, I believe. And that's a phased plan. It's the three phases over ten years. And so, you know, we talked to them about different options, and, you know, basically gonna do a, you know, pay-as-you-go mitigation that you, we've seen with other developments in the past, but, um, it's not all coming at once, it's it's a.
And that that, what triggers that is when they actually, um, get their their plans approved.
That is correct.
So once they're approved, even if they don't build that community, start in five to ten years. They, that it's, they they were engaged at that point, and we, the reservations for those student stations are are done then, right?
Right. It's, they submit their plan, and then it has to go to a, uh, to their board. And William sits on each one of the planning boards and is able to provide comments for each of those boards.
Like, so for example, you know, Town Center, which was, uh, developed a long time ago, but didn't really break ground with any, um, residential buildings for many, many years. Um, but at that time, did those developers, they had to pay impact fees at that time?
No, the Town Center was a DRI.
Okay, so it was totally.
And so they, they were, um, and I believe it was right around thirty-six hundred, uh, home sites at that time. So they don't have, they still have to pay impact fees, but they don't have to pay, uh, mediation. And so we are counting, you know, they're, they're still building over in Town Center, so we're still counting. And we're getting to that point where if they put any more in there, then yes, they're gonna have to do mitigation.
Okay.
Town Center, Palm Coast Park, which was another DRI.
Yeah, because we, uh, I was in there just recently, and I'm starting to see a lot of new development in Town Center. Now, that was a ghost town for a long time, just a movie theater. But, uh, so yeah, that's interesting to know that, uh, we're getting closer to that threshold in there.
Right, same thing with, uh, Palm Coast Park.
I'm not excited about development and not for it, but it's happening, right? So I would just, you know, love that if we could collaborate with these developers in any way we can to get really nice schools in those areas.
Right, and we are. William, um, sits down and has contact with each of the municipalities, you know, almost weekly.
And I noticed that, um, you know, I keep seeing the upgrade of chillers and things on in the future. So are we, and we've talked more about that with the with the Metansus, uh, addition. So are we going to new technology in the future on our buildings for these upgrades here? Is that what that's referring to?
Um, uh, well, as far as Metansus, and and such, much like FPC, that that plant is twenty-five years old. Um, and we're converting that over its water, we're going air-cooled on all the chillers. Um, and that entire, that's what's going on. It started last year, and as you can see, that's the one that has the four-point, oh, go, go back up a little, right there, the four-point-two-seven-five, that's this year. And then, um, finishing that next year, and then we will start the Metansus upgrade, and then that'll be similar. Not, not the addition part, because the addition has the new chiller, but the existing, um, that also is, um, water cool. We'll be doing air-cooled and having redundancy. As years ago, when they built these, they didn't have much redundancy. So if a motor went down, the chiller would go down. We're now, we're building them to have redundancy, that if a motor goes down, there's motors there to still, the chiller doesn't go down. It has redundancy, and we have redundancy chillers to be more efficient and effective. And it's just not fun when school doesn't have air.
Right. Especially right about this time of year.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, great. Uh, all right, any other, any other questions on, uh, the five-year district plan here, plant services? Okay, uh, then we will move on to ten point zero-four, and that is the historic County Courthouse and Annex update. Updates.
All right, again, good afternoon, Board, Chair, Superintendent. At our last board meeting on the 9th of July, you had asked staff to bring back and to negotiate with Flagler County on a lease agreement for the Historic County Courthouse. Attached, you will find a draft lease agreement for this facility. The major points are basically a two-year initial term followed by options to renew for two additional five-year terms, an option to assume maintenance on any or on a anniversary date to reduce our rent, an option to purchase after initial two-year term and property would be deed restricted for public purposes and to preserve the historic facade. This was brought before the county at yesterday's meeting and the county agreed to have their manager, Ms. Petito, to negotiate with us. I've reached out to them and we're in that process right now. There is not a price for that lease on this document at this time. We're looking at the couple of options of what that cost would be with maintenance, with us performing the maintenance and with the county performing the maintenance.
Okay, if I recall, from the outset, we were, I guess we were using the lease that was with the previous tenant? And that, if I remember certainly right, was it around 7,000?
It was around 8,000.
8,000?
8,000, and the county wants to just cover their cost for whatever their insurance cost and the maintenance cost for that particular one.
So they're coming up with that number now? Is that what we're looking at?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we anticipate that that could be significantly higher than what we were expecting?
I don't anticipate it to be, but I am waiting on them to let us know. It was around that 8,000 mark for several years with First Baptist. One of the other things that the county mentioned was they wanted us to work with the Historical Society. And as you remember, at the last meeting, we had the Historical Society here and I sat down with them after that meeting and we looked at space in the courthouse and we looked at the large vault area on the first floor as a potential place for, you know, either exhibits or, either exhibits or storage for the Historical Society. It's about almost 800 square feet.
Did we have a proposed use for that space in the original plan?
We did not.
We did not, okay. And for access to that, there was concern about access and security and...
Right, we had talked about, we would treat it pretty much the same way that we do Little Red Schoolhouse where it would need to be scheduled and then people that would come in and want to either see an exhibit would have to be background screened.
So I know we're just in the beginning stages of this, but is there thought to occupy that full-time or is it just basically to create a museum that would be available to view by appointment only?
I believe that's the, it's pretty much the same way that we do Little Red Schoolhouse where you have to have an appointment. I do not believe that they would occupy it full-time.
So because they have their space across the street, so they would stay there for their day-to-day operations?
Right, and the county mentioned that the old post office, which is right next to the courthouse, is currently being used by a health, and I'm sorry, I don't know exactly who it is, but it's currently being used by a health facility. And as soon as they build another space for that organization, the county is looking at that being a potential place for the Historical Society, which is just right next to the courthouse.
Okay, so just trying to understand that. So then what we're talking about right now could be a temporary and they would fully move over there or this would be in addition to? What's the thought right now?
It could be a temporary or it could be, you know, they might have a storage need because that was a concern that they had as well was that they needed someplace for storage.
Got it, okay. Very good, okay. Well, it's good to know that we didn't have a specific use for that if we do go down that road because I know we really filled that place up quick with the diagram that you gave. So there's not a lot of extra room there. So, okay. And the only other concern personally in the lease is what our obligation would be for maintaining its historical value in the facade out front, you know? Just again, that can get very expensive and that's just only a concern. I think it's wonderful that we preserve, but on whose dime? And that's really what I would be concerned about. But I am happy to see what the efficiencies we're creating and the cost savings we have by consolidating these other locations into one, there is significant benefit there. And they're saying in two years that initially would be an option in two years to buy it out from them?
Right, that's what we thought. We wanted to have an option to, you know, get to know the building and make sure that we, you know, it's a 100-year-old building, the front part of that.
Yeah, I think in two years we could assess, you know, if it's viable for us. Because again, it is an old building and we're a school that is advancing in technology and our needs are getting more technological and an old building may not facilitate, you know, that future. It may serve our need for a while, but in the end, maybe we move on to somewhere else and this becomes a museum one day, right? So, okay. Any other comments or questions?
So I will bring this lease agreement back to the board at the 6:00 PM meeting and I will have a number for our lease, for our monthly lease and I can...
So this is going to come back with the negotiated numbers for us to vote on on the 20th?
That is correct.
And you'll get that information in advance as soon as we get those numbers. They'll be provided to you and it will be uploaded to 4DOS so you can have it.
And then in tandem, the county is working that same process. There was a process to, yesterday to delete the lease that currently First Baptist Academy has and they're concerned, the board members were concerned that they had another, somebody else to take over that lease.
Yeah, watch the meeting. So they're saying that if we enter into a lease, then they would let them out earlier. Otherwise theirs would stay in place until it officially expires. Is that right?
That's kind of what I know, yeah.
All right.
So Dave, I've got just something real quick and again, I apologize if you already spoke to this, but I really, oh, I don't have to do that. I really love the two-year, that's great. The only thing that comes to my mind is as far as like a renovation schedule, because I know when you and I toured the building together, there were certainly like restrooms that definitely needed to be updated. You guys have talked about adding new restrooms maybe to at least one of the levels. So the only thing that comes to my mind is, you know, what is kind of that, your thought right now on a renovation timeline? Because obviously it would be unfortunate to spend lots of money renovating on something that then two years later we find not to be viable, you know, long-term.
So your question is what the renovation timeline would be?
Well, I guess, yeah, I guess, well, when we first were talking about this, I kind of thought we were talking about for sure a 10-year lease, right? That was kind of at least what, like I thought was happening. I actually like this idea of like a two-year, but then the piece now that I don't know how it fits is the renovation piece. Because if we were going to for sure have this building for 10 years, then like all of this renovation expense makes sense. But if we're potentially going to only have this building for two years, then what are you and your team thinking at this point of how much renovation you would put into the building initially?
At our last meeting, we did have a slide that we had a budget number for renovation there where there were some areas that we were not going to move forward with until, I think there was a bathroom and a conference room up on the third floor that we were not going to move forward with until the need developed for that. So we are looking at staging it a little bit. But the county has a good report for their structural condition of the building, so we believe that we are getting a good building and we had a very good report for indoor air quality for the building. So our two-year lease was just something that we felt was a wise move to just being able to, you know, figure out what those maintenance needs were for, you know, the current and for the future.
Yeah, no, I think that's great. Something that I have shared with you already, there, for those who haven't toured it, it's a great building. It's just, to me, it's not 100% on-brand with what I would want representing Flagler Schools from a, if nothing else, kind of an aesthetic perspective. When you go into one of our schools today, they're beautiful. I mean, you know, the custodial staff is doing a great job. Everything is, you know, painted well, the restrooms are in good order. You know, this building, I would say, has not kept, you know, has not necessarily kept up with renovations. And so, you know, if we are using it for even two years, that's two years where we have our students and our staff, you know, using this building where floor tiles are, you know, peeling up. And there's a lot of spaces that are admittedly pretty rough. And so, you know, my preference would be from day one, our students and staff are in a building that they are proud of and is on par with our other buildings. But that's like tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars considering how much stuff costs today to renovate. So then just, I guess that's just what I'm struggling with is, again, I love this two-year plan, that's fantastic. It's just, oh, you know, we put all this money into beautifying it and then we don't keep it, so, anyway, that's just, those have just been my thoughts on it, Dave.
Well, one thing too is that we have the option, so basically we're looking at a 10-year overall, but the two years is an allowance of time. I would imagine that at any time we decided that, you know what, you know, after six months into that two-year term, we realize that we're clearly happy with this building, we know that it's not going to be a burden on us and it is going to hold up and all those good things, that we could exercise those extensions at any given time. I think that's something that we should have, if it's not already in here, we should be able to put those into place when we feel comfortable. But at least we have that window. If we get in there and we find we need more investigation, it takes more time and we may hold back some of those improvements. Sally makes a good point that, you know, if we wouldn't put all this money up front and then we're out of there in two years, that probably wasn't a good idea, right? So before we make any large capital improvements to the building, we really should be in a mindset that we're going to continue on for at least another four years.
And the two years is for us to also, as a district, to assess whether we want to continue to lease it or purchase it. I believe as we're right now that we are planning on being there way past two years because we don't have the facilities that are going to house what we're going to house there. So the two-year window is for us to be able to assess how is the building functioning and do we really want to potentially purchase it or just continue to lease it for 10 years or whatever the remaining balance of that is. It's not, my position or where we're at is to have for two years and then move out. Because then, right, that would not make any sense.
It would only be if we discovered something that's just, it can't be cured, it's not going to work, it's obsolescent, whatever it is that it is. You know, to have a two-year diligence period is actually a pretty nice thing to have in most commercial deals when you're leasing, they're, you know, the costs are buried by the seller. But when you're going to buy, you know, if you get 60 to 90 days on a commercial, there's not much tolerance for the seller beyond that unless it's clearly warranted. So that puts us in a better position to mitigate risk, right, of the unknown, right? So I see that as actually a benefit, but I do agree with Ms. Hunt, we don't want to put a bunch of dollars in there if we're going to leave.
I don't think that's our intention.
Okay, good. Well, then that's been clear and made.
But there are things that we're going to have to do for it to be at the level to Ms. Hunt's point that for our students to be there. So we're going to go in there, our custodial team, you know, our painters, all of those things to bring it up to that status, but before going into a large project.
And we've currently already met with the CM, we've walked that, we're creating a scope of work, hoping that this was going to move forward. So we're already starting that process. While Dave's working on the contractual part, we're already working with on the scope of work, what do we need with all the different departments that we're going to go in and what are their needs to be able to get that? That's where our budget number came from and it was on the five-year plan that I presented a few minutes ago. So we're looking to move forward and do like Ms. Moore just said, to get it to our standards as Flagler County schools.
Yeah, and isn't that, we do have some margin there in the sense that we are reducing the costs outside of, by consolidating this here, we're lowering our costs. So even if we have to put some money toward that, in the end, after two years, we likely still would be ahead if we, compared to what we're actually doing now with these all over the place.
I'm sorry, I was going to say, and to keep in mind, part of the dollar amount is we're not shown is the freeing up at Banel Elementary School in River Fire of those classrooms, which there's not a tangible dollar amount other than space. And space is for us...
It's very valuable.
Correct, so.
There's 10 classrooms that we're freeing up and if we had to purchase portables or we had to lease portables, then we're...
And that was not even included in those savings calculations, right?
No, it was included.
It was, okay.
We did talk about...
With the Banel, not having to get those portables?
We had listed what the cost of a new portable will be.
If we had to do that.
Right, if we had to do that.
Got it.
And I know it's different than our other buildings, but I just, I love the character of it. I think I'd be, I would like to be in that building rather than a portable, so.
A hundred percent.
I think it's neat.
Hundred percent.
It's an absolutely beautiful building and I think to Superintendent Moore's point, you know, once some fresh paint gets put in there and it's filled with Flagler love and Flagler forward energy, it's going to be a great place. If, I think we're still voting on it, all right? If it goes through.
Yeah, if it goes through.
Yes.
Okay, great. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we'll move on to 11 Human Resource and we are going to move up to 11.04, Mr. Willand.
Board Chairman Furry, Superintendent. Stop-loss is an annual contract as part of our benefit package. It ensures us from the small group of folks that have tremendous insurance costs during the course of a year. The actuaries in consultation with Danielle have kind of reviewed and what you see are three options here. The first option pretty much holds us at the same stop-loss level as last year, is 225,000 with a caveat, which is what the insurance companies call a laser. I learn something new every year. What we have is one current employee that has a high, basically a high-cost curve across the board. And so with this laser, we would raise our stop-loss for that single individual to the $400,000 threshold in case, excuse me, the $425,000 threshold. $400,000 threshold in case, excuse me, the $425,000 threshold, and remain with the same stop-loss for all the other remaining folks. By doing that, we would actually be able to hold our costs down as far as there'd be a 2% decrease in the overall cost of the coverage. However, we would incur liability of up to $200,000 for that individual. Were we to not do that and just go through a standard stop-loss, the stop-loss premium would increase 39% due to what the actuary see of this individual's possibility of incurring additional costs. And that would be an increase of about $262,000 as a fixed cost in the potential with a maximum liability, even though there is still a 1.3% decrease in the overall aggregate because of where the rest of our pool lies. So, it was Ms. Boils and Brown and Brown's recommendation that we accept, which would be the renewal option one at $635,357 for the stop-loss premiums in option one for this year.
Okay, and you're saying that that is the increase of-
That is actually a decrease of the premium, but it increases our particular liability by insuring just that one individual at the stop-loss of $425,000. So we're, we are, actuaries don't gamble, but the actuaries are calculating that the odds of this person reaching that high threshold is low enough to that, go ahead and incur the premiums that we are incurring. And then if we had to pay for that individual, we would have to kind of match that between the $225,000 and the $425,000. That would be, for that individual, we would incur that cost. For any other individual we have in the pool, we would still do our normal stop-loss at $225,000.
So, if I'm hearing you right, the actuary is saying it is likely that the claims for that insured should not, will not exceed that 400-something, but if it does, then we're going to have to go up to $250,000, $225,000?
Yes.
Okay, got it. So that's our real risk exposure if the actuary is-
Is wrong.
Yeah.
And so if we decide that we aren't looking at that, then we would be incurring a 39% total increase. So that would take it from $635,000 to right around $900,000 in the premium.
Yeah. Okay, have we, is this the first time we've implemented the laser?
This is not the first time. The other times were under consultation with Gavin, and I was not involved, it was before my time.
Did we have any historical data on how accurate the actuaries were in those scenarios?
I would probably have to bring Danielle back.
I'd like to see that. I mean, you know, I know this is really constantly a numbers game, and it's, there's no exact science to it, but that is a significant difference in premium to cover it in full going to $900,000 if we weren't doing it the way that they recommended it. Which, basically, it's almost, if I'm understanding this correctly, we're going to pay $616,000, so that means we would be at like $850,000 exposure versus paying a $900,000 premium to cover it all. Is it, I mean, it almost seems like it, we're taking a gamble, I mean, we're, there doesn't seem to be a big, high-side risk dollar amount, because if we were to cover it with a premium, it would probably be more than-
If we cover with the, well, if we cover with the premium, we are absolutely more. And, but what they're, what they're saying is the laser most, you know, will most likely result in-
Right, I mean, so it doesn't really, I mean, even if that, unless they exceed the $225,000 exposure, really, there's no reason to take the higher full-coverage premium, right?
That's, well, that's the point to, exactly, that's the point to the laser, is that the lower, the lower premium is-
So it would only be if the actual is way off and it exceeds that $220, no, if it goes over that $225,000 here, are we still covered beyond that?
We're covered beyond the four, we're covered, that threshold that incurs our coverage is at the $425,000.
For that one-
For that one, for that one person.
Okay, and then we, then it says we would be exposed $200, up to $225,000 over and above the four?
No, we're, everybody's covered at $225,000 except for that one person sitting there.
Oh, I see.
So that gap is almost like, yeah, exactly. So that gap is where we incur the cost, and so-
So we are covered, we are, our fund would be hit first at $225,000 if they reach that, and then anything above that, up to $425,000?
No, from $425,000 and above, within, the stop-loss would once again kick in, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so then we are exposed up to that $425,000?
For that one person.
For that one person.
For that one person.
Okay, got it. Okay. Any questions regarding that?
Yeah, it's a hard one for me to follow.
Yeah, the insurance stuff is really challenging.
Yes, it is, and I will ask Ms. Boyle to do that.
Really rely on our consultants on that.
Yes, I do.
Yeah.
No, but Will, I guess I'll just say, I mean, I think this is the point that you brought up. I've found a lot of times, like with insurance and things like that, it's like, well, I can either for sure pay this amount, or there's a chance that I have to pay this amount. And if there's not that much difference, you know, I know I tend to go with a high-deductible health plan usually every year, because I kind of would rather keep my monthly expenses low, and I just kind of always look at that total out-of-pocket for the year, just to make sure I can handle that. And so, I think, you know, Bob, it just, for me, it all comes down to you and Patty and like, you know, I guess I need to trust like what you guys advise as far as like what, again, thinking about me and like looking at what's that maximum out-of-pocket for me as a household, I expect, I assume you guys do the same thing for the self-funded health account, which, Bob, that's what this comes out of, correct?
Yes.
So I assume you guys are looking at that and weighing that, so I, when we do go talk about that further, I just, you guys will let us know like what your recommendation is.
And we'll bring Danielle Boil back, so she can provide some examples.
Yeah, because at this point, we were deferring to the recommendation of Brown and Brown.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so you are, that you are recommending what they are recommending. Okay, great.
Okay, so then we will move on to 11.05, Board Approval of Personnel Items.
And that is the standard document that you receive monthly before, at your board meetings, as far as the current state of our workforce, as far as new appointments, resignations, retirements. This is obviously the workshop, so it will, it's incomplete at this time, as, you know, time progresses between now and the last, the next board meeting. We will have additional appointments, and we've had some last-minute resignations, and where folks have taken positions in other states and things like that, and so, but we've also, you know, had a great many people onboard and hired and ready to roll for day one.
Yeah, I was just curious about the like, late resignations, like if those were anticipated, like we knew they were coming or-
Sometimes our folks anticipate them, but they keep their cards close to their chest, and, you know, a bird in the hand, you know, making the decision, do I really want to, you know, move back to my family in Minnesota, or am I going to stay? And then they kind of let us know, unfortunately, at the last hour of our principles.
Yeah, I was just curious about that.
Okay, and just to, because some parents out there have been voicing concerns, again, about our last conversation about where we are with our teacher shortage, and so, what was the last number that we were talking, was it 11?
Our vacancies?
Vacancy.
The last number was 11, I can bring an update.
Right, and so-
I think five of those were classroom, actual classroom teachers. 11 instructional positions, five classroom positions of that 11, it was five classrooms.
Five classrooms, okay. And so, the, you know, I know that the media has written some articles about that, and you had clarified in there, in that we do have a plan for first day of school for all these positions. Just want to reassure parents that their kids are not coming to a room without instructors, so.
Yeah, we are, we are always in hiring season for substitutes, and, you know, our substitute pool, we just had our initial, you know, kickoff substitute training with our folks, and, you know, every day, we're hiring new subs, and you get the range of folks.
And with the understanding that some of our subs are certified teachers.
That's exactly where I was going, we have a lot of retired folks that are former teachers that are actually-
That are still certified.
And I think that's an important thing to highlight, that these are certified teachers, they may not be the permanent teacher, but they are certified teachers. So, that's important for parents to know. And are we seeing, I mean, obviously, it's been getting better, are we considering to see that trend in demand, the applications, or whether it's with us or just in general?
Well, I can't speak to, you know, all the other district workforces, but I, I mean, just in the, in the four-year trend that I've been with the district, our vacancy rate at this point in the year, I mean, we, two years ago, we would have measured our vacancy rate in, you know, 10s, 20s, 30s, you know, to be at a point where we're nearly double-digit, and we're double-digit with classroom teachers.
And our, the state calls weekly about our vacancies, and we did the last report of 11 with five classroom, they too noticed, they were like, man, you guys are in a really good place for this time of year, especially in comparison to other districts. So we're in a really good place, we're, we want to be completely staffed with our permanent staff, but we do have a plan for those classrooms that are currently vacant, which is the five classroom teacher positions. And we're still hiring.
Yeah, and that's great. And I just think some parents, they just want reassurance that we're on it, right? They want to know that this is not something that we're just saying, okay, well, 11's not that bad, so we just kind of coast it, you know? They want to know we're actively working hard every day to fill those spots so their kids can have permanent teachers.
Our positions are posted, the new platform actually posts nationwide, and it's linked to, you know, the Florida Department of Education Board for vacancies as well. We post a lot on Indeed, which is basically the new go-to place as far as nationwide looking for applicants and vacancies. So, it's out there, we are at a point now where the critical need areas or the critical shortage areas, you know, that the state has identified are a large part of those five folks, math, science, you know, those are tough ones to fill at this point, so that's our, that's our task.
Very good. All right, any other questions or comments? All right, thank you, Mr. O'Leary. All right, so we're going to move on to 12.01, Board Policies, Ms. Moore.
Yeah, so this is just bringing back to you the board policies that we presented last time with just additional opportunities for any adjustments. I do not have any new information for that.
We already went over these, right?
Yes, these are the ones that we've already gone over. Yeah, just bringing them back through the normal workflow.
Very good. Okay, then I will move on to 12.02.
So, Flagler Schools is a part of the Small School District Council Consortium. This is the resolution and contract for us to continue to participate in that consortium. The cost to the district is $3,250. They provide educational information, interpretation, and consultation to small and rural districts around topics that are pertinent to small and rural districts that may not be pertinent to larger districts across the, across the state. And so this will be coming before you on the August 20th meeting for your consideration to continue to be a part of this consortium, and for that cost of $3,250.
Okay. All right, so if there are no comments or questions, we will move forward to, looks like, public comment. Do we have any public comment?
No.
No one signed up? Okay, see no one approaching, we will close public comment and move on to board member requests. Any board member requests?
None.
Okay, and we have upcoming board topics. The public, if they go on board docs online, they can see upcoming board discussion topics that other board members have asked to be brought forward, and we will address those at a date in the future. And if there are any comments on here, then we will move forward to closing comments.
I don't have any.
Sally, do you have any closing comments today? Sally?
Sound went out.
Oh, you're muted.
Oh.
I am on mute. Thank you. Hey, I just had a quick, more, instead of a comment, more of a question. Superintendent Moore, there's just like some really great stuff that you shared with us about school grades and breaking, you know, a multi-year, you know, record, you know, moving from C to B. Has all of that great news been shared with the community at large?
We have done a press release on that information, we will be doing a spotlight at the August 20th board meeting, will be with all of this information at that public meeting.
I did see that made the News Journal, too.
Yes.
I don't remember what it said, but I saw that.
Yes, so we did do a news, a press release of that information.
So was that like in The Observer also?
We send it out to everyone.
And then they choose whether they want to print it or not, kind of thing?
Yes, yes.
Gotcha. Awesome. Well, listen, just again, great job, I mean, I'm just really excited about where things are headed, and I'm just really excited about this time for this school year.
Yes, I am too. School starts on Monday.
All right.
Okay, do you have anything?
Uh, no, just getting ready for school.
Okay, yes, very excited for first day of school, and very encouraged by our academic numbers, we are moving the needle, and I know that the community is expecting even more, and we are going to rise to that occasion. And, but it is wonderful to say that we are all A and B schools, and we've broken a nine-year period where we had schools that were a C and they've moved to a B. We've got some great momentum here, and I'm very, very, very excited to see what the new school year brings. A reminder that we do have elections right now, and we have two seats up for school board. I encourage everyone out there to, number one, exercise their rights to vote and be heard through their vote. Take a look at your candidates carefully across the board, but also on the school board. And the, all the candidates of the school board that are running, to my knowledge, have been endorsed by sitting board members in some way, shape, or form. So, you might want to look at those endorsements, because that might be telling on some of the values, if you look at the voting records of those school board members on who they endorsed might, the characteristics of what they might vote on in the future, too. So, that might be a good way to help do your due diligence. And that's all I have for today, Superintendent.
School starts on Monday.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned. This meeting's adjourned.